Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the March 28th, 2023 regular meeting and work sessions of the Pinehurst Village Council. We have quite a varied and extensive agenda tonight, and there are a number of people here in Village Hall. I would urge you all to take a seat if you wish as we proceed through the agenda. If you are not in Village Hall but listening to this meeting by livestream and you wish to make any public comments to the Village Council tonight, you may do that by sending an email to the Village Clerk at the address publiccomments@vopnc.org. It's publiccomments, two Cs, at vopnc.org. The Village Clerk will distribute those written comments after today to the Village Council and appropriate staff. If you are here tonight for one of the three public hearings that are on the agenda, or if you wish to speak at the end of the regular agenda under our public comment time on any subject whatsoever, there are sign-up sheets in the rear of Assembly Hall, and I would direct your attention hopefully to the appropriate form. There, in other words, there is a sign-up sheet for public hearing number one, public hearing number two, public hearing number three, and also for regular comments at the end of the meeting. At the appropriate time as the meeting progresses, the Village Clerk will take that sign-up sheet, and I will call on anybody who has signed up for the appropriate hearing or public comments at that time. Having set up those procedures, I would also mention that when addressing the Village Council during the public hearings or during public comments at the end of the meeting, we try to ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes. Try not to be redundant on the subject you're addressing if it has been already addressed by someone before. Keep your comments courteous and address them to the Village Council as a whole, not to an individual of the staff in the audience or council. With those procedures in mind, we'll proceed to item number two on our agenda tonight, which is reports from the Village Manager and members of the Village Council. I'll call on Jeff Sandborn. Jeff?
Thank you, John. I'd just like to comment on one thing, and it's a one thing that's on a lot of people's mind right now, and that's revaluation. If those of you that are in the room or are listening otherwise were shocked and alarmed by the news you got with regard to revaluation of your properties, I can assure you, you're not alone. The revaluation around this time resulted in some pretty steep increases across the county. In the village of Pinehurst, the average increase was 50 percent, just a shade over 50 percent. And some folks' properties came in a little bit under that, and some folks' properties came in a little bit over that. And I can, we can all appreciate the concern that people might have with regard to how that might impact their property taxes in the future. But I want to do my best to try to allay that concern, because what we do when we get a new revaluation like this is we go back and we calculate what is the new adjusted property rate that gives us the right revenue to be able to meet all of our obligations and deliver the services that our community provides in accordance with the plan that we have laid out right now and the plan we're developing at this time for the next five years. So we are getting along in that planning process, and I can tell you that for this coming year, FY24, it's looking like after we make that recalculation and we allow for the impacts on our ability to provide services that are driven by some of these cumulative large inflationary impacts that we've all been contending with over the last couple of years, it looks like our tax rate for 2024 is going to come in somewhere around 23 and a half, maybe 24 pennies. Okay? That's compared to 31 cents right now. And that, and you know, if you're one of those people that had an average revaluation change of 50 percent, that will result in a slightly larger tax bill, and that's the reason it's slightly larger would be driven by two things. First, we had a half penny increase built in the plan last year to contend with kind of the last year of an ongoing state mandated pension, employee pension withholding requirement that was written into a plan several years ago. And then the other one, the more significant one, is the cumulative large inflationary impacts that we've had over the last couple of years. But it won't be anywhere near what you saw when you looked at your property valuation and saw, you know, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 percent, whatever it is. Our staff is still continuing to examine the out years, year two through five, and the plan that we're developing right now. We're not really sure how that's going to lay out yet, but at least for 2024, the impact should be fairly minimal. That concludes my report, John.
Thank you, Jeff. I know we're all very interested in how the budget works out. Staff's working on that, as Jeff said, and gave you some indication as to where we think the tax rate may end up for the coming fiscal year. Coming to reports from the Council on our stakeholder relations, I have two comments with respect to the village itself. The first point is that, as you will notice, in the core village, this week we've started the amenity improvement plan in the core village, which will involve landscaping changes, painting, fix-ups, water management, and a number of activities to keep the core village looking well into the future. There will be some discombobulation perhaps of traffic and a few other things in the next few weeks, but the result will be an enhanced look to the village itself. Also this week, members of staff and council have been meeting with the architects for the Library Archives project, and they're starting their space need issues and discussing with us long-term needs of the archives and the library. We appreciate their attention. With respect to the resort, last week I attended, some of you did I think too, the sort of grand opening of the new front porch of the Carolina Hotel. The resort continues to make significant investments in their properties here, and we all benefit from that. We appreciate the efforts of the resort to keep their properties up to state, up to grade all the time. And finally, with respect to First Health, and so far as I know, the Cancer Center went through its opening yesterday and today and through the coming week, and again, we're delighted with the investment they've made in this very special project here in Pinehurst. Having concluded my comments, I'll go to other council members, and perhaps Jane, would you have comments tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind everyone that the Register of Deeds at the county up in Carthage has an anti-fraud program that everybody who owns land can participate in. You go on the Moore County's website and go to the Register of Deeds page on that website, and you can type in your name. It's a free service, and then if any document gets filed in the Moore County land records, they will send you an email and let you know about it, so that that way you can check and make sure it's something that you're aware of that concerns your property. And it's free, it's easy to type in your name and avail yourself of that service. Second of all, and again with respect to the county, the county is going to be updating its long-range land use plan, and they're going to be putting together a steering committee that includes representatives from all the towns in the county, as well as realtors and residents and farmers and stakeholders of various kinds. I don't know if we've been approached yet, but I think we will be pretty soon, and that's going to be quite a project to look at the planning for growth across the county as a whole. And then closer to home, Pinehurst Business Partners had its monthly meeting last night, and among other events, which I've talked about in the past, the Dog Jog, which I think is this weekend. They're going to be holding an egg hunt for grownups during Easter week. They will be hiding Easter eggs filled with raffle tickets throughout the downtown, and if you find an egg, you can turn it into the community center to win a drawing of gift cards at local establishments. So you may see this poster around town. It's the egg hunt. Anybody can participate during Easter week. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move over here. Lydia, do you have comments tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you, John. Last week I went to a work session for the Pinehurst, excuse me, Pinehurst Southern Pines Aberdeen Convention and Visitors Bureau. They are putting together a program right now where they're going to be distributing at least a million dollars to potentially the county, the municipalities, and to nonprofits in Moore County, and these are, this is money that can be used on projects to attract tourists in Moore County. I have the draft application. I'm going to give it to Kelly and have her give it to all the council and to give to staff. Second, and Kelly, if you'll put this on the screen, for past couple of meetings, I have brought in these gorgeous glass pine cones that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is putting in parks all around Moore County, and it's to get people out onto our trails in connection with Year of the Trail that was declared by the General Assembly. This is last year, this is what they put out last week. This thing has gone crazy. WRAL did a story on it. There's a group that has created a Facebook page on it, so if you find, there are only 100 pine cones that are being put out. They're all one of a kind. If you find one, you keep it, and then you're registered for a drawing, a two-night stay in one of our hotels and $250 gift certificate. You'll see on the bottom here, Home of Golf's webpage is, there it is, and that's how you find Pinecone Pathways there. The Facebook page is Pinecones Pathways NC, and if you want to know about this more after this meeting, let me know, and I'll be happy to tell you about it. And the last thing I want to say is to me, it is such an honor serving on this council, and the two best things for me are working with the community to hear what your concerns are and address your problems, and second is working with this amazing staff. I think one of the disappointments I've had is I've been trying, I've been warning this council and maybe staff to engage in some conflict resolution, and that may still happen, but what I want to say to all of you is I like this so much that I am going to run for reelection to my seat this year, and I'm going to take a tagline of Bob Dedman. It's always Pinehurst, always better. And I think this is such a great community, and we have so much potential, and I never, I hope we never lose sight of how much better we can be. So thank you, John.
Jeff Morgan?
Got a few things here. First of all, I'd like to recognize that last year's Miss Senior America is currently escorting the reigning Miss Senior America in the back of the room, and so that's Miss Debbie Robbins. So Debbie has come to us from Kentucky, and the reason she is here is that tomorrow, Pinehurst is hosting the Miss Senior America North Carolina Pageant. It'll be with the Sandhills Community College. So if anybody wants to know more about that and see some talented ladies demonstrating the age of elegance, you can go over to the communities, or excuse me, to the Sandhills College there. Next on there is we did have a meeting for TJ COG. That's the Center Portion, North Carolina, Representatives for Government, and I represent Pinehurst on that. There's Mr. McGannon, who has just come on board, who is in charge of the grant program and working with different grants for communities. He's done, he's working with several communities here in Moore County, but I've already forwarded that contact information to Dana, as he's a new member on board, and so if there's any free money that's going to be given out in grants, we can line up for that also. Did highlight in the meeting to the panel there about the historic aspect of Pinehurst, the, obviously the golf, the horse track, the historic village, the shopping, and they got pretty excited about it and committed to a road trip down here, and so we may be hosting them at some point in time here for that council. And so, over there. And I'm also honored to serve in the Pinehurst Village Council, and I'm going to be running for mayor this fall. Thank you.
Patrick?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Morgan, who is that escorting the new Miss Senior USA here today?
Well, I've said it before, that is last year's Miss Senior America, Laura Morgan, and yes, it is a relation, so.
Okay.
I'm usually known as Laura's husband.
Okay. Thank you. I recognized her. I didn't want her to go unrecognized by everybody else. Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. One, the Tri-Cities Gathering took place today, and I attended it, as did Councilwoman Hoagman, and they discussed this MPO you may have read about in the newspaper, Metropolitan Planning Organization, its impact on our community, on Aberdeen, on Southern Pines, and so forth. And we're in the beginning stages of planning how this would be set up. It's required under law that we do this simply because growth has caught up with us as a community, and we now fall under various statutes of the federal government that we haven't fallen under before. So we have some rapidly approaching deliverable dates between now and the end of the year, and village staff will be working with the other community staffs and of course with us here at the council to figure out what is the best road forward, but it is something that we should all keep in mind. It's one more local entity that we will all be part of and be dealing with. Secondly, about a week or so ago, maybe it's two weeks now, we actually, it was two weeks ago, we presented a, made an announcement here about a plaque for Vivian Cunningham, who is turning 100 years old, a member of the Greatest Generation, and last weekend the mayor and I went to a celebration that Vivian had at Chick-fil-A, We're Better Than Chick-fil-A, and where she had many of her friends there, and it was a terrific turnout, and she is spry and proud to be 100, and she looks like she'll be around for a lot longer time. So it was very good that we were able to honor her for her significant contribution, not only to the community but to her country. Lastly, to touch on what the Village Manager said when we opened up tonight, the question, I believe, before us is not whether we're going to reduce the tax rate for residents of the village of Pinehurst, it's how much we're going to reduce it by. And, because I too have had many calls and some emails, and so I had hoped that those of you, please continue to express your opinions. As a resident of Pinehurst, I too am subject to property evaluations, but it's really about our community as a whole and how we govern ourselves and how much money we need to provide those basic municipal services in an efficient manner for all our residents. So welcome to your input. Keep your eyes on us. Watch us. We'll be debating it probably over the next several months. We have a statutory requirement to put in place a new budget before the end of our fiscal year that ends on June 30th, and we always meet that date. And last year, we also happened to reduce tax rates, not by as much as we'll probably reduce it this year, but it was a slight reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I was reminded of one other thing I meant to mention earlier, and that is that this Saturday, April the 1st, starting at 11 o'clock at the Harness Track is the annual matinee races. I know many of you are involved in attending that and supporting that over time. There will be eight races as usual, and a mayor's race this year among myself, Southern Pines, Aberdeen, and Foxfire. So the races start at 1:00. The weather hopefully will be good. I'm sure the driving club looks forward to your attendance. Having completed those reports, moving on to agenda item number three. This is a motion to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda are, this time including our minutes of recent meetings. Are there any questions about the consent agenda or anything a council member wishes to bring out for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve all the items listed and consider routine on the consent agenda.
Second?
It's a motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Brazella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Move on to item number four. One of the great privileges of being on the Village Council and as mayor is to honor folks who have given their time and commitment to our major committees and commissions, and today we have a resolution honoring the work of Terry Lurz, Honor Historic Preservation Commission. Terry, would you join me at the speaker? Terry, on behalf of the Village Council, I'm going to move this around. I have this certificate of appreciation for your work, and I'd like to read it, and again, thank you for that. This is a mayoral proclamation of the village of Pinehurst, whereas the Village Council of Pinehurst, North Carolina wishes to acknowledge and express its appreciation for Mr. Terry Lurz and his dedicated service to the citizens of Pinehurst and as a member of the Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission. Whereas Mr. Lurz was appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission on February 1st, 2019, and served continuously and faithfully from that time, and whereas Mr. Lurz was instrumental in the efficient operation of the Historic Preservation Commission, always conducting the village's business in a courteous, professional manner, and whereas Mr. Lurz was involved in many decisions affecting the character of the community, each time exhibiting sound judgment and concern for the health, safety, welfare of the village of Pinehurst and its important historic qualities in his decision-making processes, and whereas Mr. Lurz was instrumental in revising the village of Pinehurst Historic District Guidelines adopted in 2019, and whereas Mr. Lurz played a key leadership role on significant projects within the village of Pinehurst Historic Commission. Now therefore be resolved by the Village Council of the village of Pinehurst, North Carolina, in regular session of December the 14th day of March, 2023, as follows. Section one, that the Village Council hereby expresses on behalf of the citizens of Pinehurst deep appreciation and gratitude for the gifts of time, ability, and determination given as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. This resolution was passed on the 14th day of March, 2023. In witness thereof, I have given my hand. Terry, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
We need the seats. I noticed some other folks have come in during the course of the start of the meeting. As always, there are seats in the front row available for you if you wish to come forward and use those. Move on into item number five. Jeff Sandborn, would you like to introduce this subject, please?
I sure will. Thank you, John. I think everybody by this time has probably recognized we have an assemblage of sharp-looking ladies and gentlemen in the back room there. These folks are from Pinehurst Great Fire Department, and it's always great when we can recognize these guys and gals. And we've got the Sandhills Sons of American Revolution here to provide some special recognition for some of our firefighters. And so I'd like to introduce Bruce Sensley and whoever else might want to come up to help him with that recognition. Is Bruce here? There we go.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the Village Council for allowing us to come here and recognize the outstanding performance from some of our fire department officials. The Sons of the American Revolution was chartered by an act of Congress in 1906 to perpetuate the memory of men and women who by their services and sacrifices during the American Revolution that achieved the independence of the American people and to foster true patriotism. The SAR created these award programs to identify and recognize public servants in our communities who go above and beyond the normal job expectations to serve the citizens of our communities. We hope that these SAR awards will help to identify and thank individuals for their exceptional work and will raise the level of public service in their performance. Could I have Chief Cole, please?
Thank you, Mr. Finsley, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Several weeks ago, Mr. Townsend actually approached us and let us know about the possibility of recognizing some of our, or nominating some of our employees for awards, and we submitted two nominations and were pleased to be informed that our staff are being recognized for both awards, so they're, both are being received, recognized tonight for their awards. So first, I'd like to recognize Battalion Chief Jennifer Black, if she'd come forward. She was nominated for her community outreach concepts that have grown into thriving prevention programs offered by the fire department. She developed programming for a junior fire academy that mimics actual firefighter training and daily activities within the scope of the candidate's skills and abilities. Throughout the week, they learn fire history, first aid, CPR, fire extinguisher use, safety and prevention techniques. It's offered as a summer enrichment camp for cadets, cadets that are nine to 12 years old, and we continually evaluate that to see if we can offer a better programming for those that are interested in attending that. Additionally, she is being recognized, she recognized the need in the community for CPR training and suggested that the fire department offer community CPR and AED training during National CPR and AED Awareness Week in June. The first class was offered. It's led to additional classes on a quarterly basis, and after listening to the voice of the customer, we offer, we have continued to offer those classes. It's probably been going on for five or six years, maybe more than that now. All the seats for the classes are typically filled during the first few days of registration, and it continues to be very well attended. So congratulations, Jennifer. And we also nominated one of our crews from Station 92. If I could have Captain John Warren, Lieutenant Joshua Mack, and Senior Firefighter Aaron Byrd come forward. So this is an unusual call from our standpoint with our proximity to the hospital. These members of our department were nominated for the EMS Medal and Certificate and nominated for the recognition for their response to a call for service on January the 9th, 2023. They were the first emergency medical responders to arrive on the scene to find a child being born. They utilized their care, compassion, and training to assist in the final moments of delivery, cleared the newborn's airway, and stimulated the infant's first breaths. They cut the umbilical cord and provided emergency medical care for the mother and infant until the ambulance arrived, and at the conclusion of the call, the population of Pinehurst increased by one. Congratulations, gentlemen. Job well done. And we appreciate the crowd being here for this presentation tonight.
Congratulations to all of our firefighters here tonight receiving the award and others present. We appreciate the extra efforts that are made continuously, day by day, month by month, by our police, fire, and emergency management services folks. So we're glad that this award could be made, and we hope maybe the same thing will happen next year. Thank you very much to the Sons for being here tonight. We'll move on then to item number six, which is a motion to exit and recess the regular meeting and enter into public hearing number one. Is there a motion?
I move to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number one.
That's a motion by Pat Brazel. Is there a second?
Second.
That's a second by Jane Hoagman. We're now in public hearing number one. If the clerk would bring me the sign-up sheet, we'll get to that eventually. Public hearing number one has to do with text amendments to the PDO creating planned community neighborhoods and neighborhood lodging accommodations. This hearing is in follow-up to This hearing is in follow-up to a hearing and deliberations by the planning board earlier this month and to considerations over the past year of short-term rental policies that are appropriate for the village of Pinehurst. So the hearing tonight is to take further public comment after staff report to the public and the council. The council is not intending to make a final decision on this tonight. We want to evaluate the comments we will receive and the staff report itself. And we'll talk among the council members after the, in public, after the comments are made. So we'll start then with a staff report from Alex Cameron. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this public hearing, again, is to consider amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance or the PDO.
Alex, can you use that just a little closer, I think, or turn that up? Thank you.
So again, this is to consider amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, which would create a new land use as well as other related or associated uses and definitions. And the following sections would be amended if this proposal were to be adopted. Section 8.5, the Table of Permitted Special Uses and Special Requirements. Section 8.6, Special Requirements to the Table of Permitting Special Uses and Special Requirements. And section 10.2, Definitions. A little quick background on the text amendment process. Zoning text amendments are, an action of zoning regulations or ordinances may be brought forth after clear adoption of a local governing board, or these amendments may be initiated to make adjustments that are necessary due to any type of changing conditions, any newly recently adopted plans or public policy, and to generally advance the welfare of the village per section 1.2 of the PDO. Amendments to the text or the zoning map may be initiated by village council, members of the planning zoning board or staff, and anyone who owns property resides in the jurisdiction or an authorized agent. With the text amendment process, there are two required minimum public hearings. One before the planning zoning board, as Mayor you mentioned. In reviewing a public hearing for a text or map amendment to planning zoning board or an advisory board nature, and they send a recommendation, a forward recommendation to the village council. In conducting their public hearing, they are to make such recommendation within 30 days or the local governing board have the ability to take up the consideration. And as with village council, the planning zoning board shall consider the adopted comprehensive plan and comment on whether that proposal is or is not consistent with that plan. Following the planning zoning board, public hearing, the village council, as we're in now, to hold a public hearing, and you're to review the recommendation made by the planning zoning board. And after conducting the hearing, too, you are to receive public comment, and you can consider the recommendation of the planning zoning board, those comments, and the comprehensive plan, as well as any recommendations made by staff. So a little bit of the background on these proposed amendments. As part of the discussions surrounding the short-term rental, the STR, with this group and this council, a different type of lodging use was kind of brought forth to our attention, and similar type of lodging use within these single-family homes and certain residential communities. Distinctions were made by the way of the process, procedures, the rules, regulations, and the organizations of these type of uses in what is deemed planned communities. These amendments would create a new land use, the Neighborhood Lodging Accommodation or NLA, within a planned community neighborhood, PCN. Governance of planned community neighborhoods are typically handled by the declarations, which are recorded with the Register of Deeds, and owners are made aware and have knowledge of such declarations when purchasing property within the neighborhood. They can be amended from time to time as necessary, but do require a supermajority vote of 67% of the property owners. Most of these areas are governed by some sort of body or association, property owner association, master's association, and allows for some type of form of self-governance within its peers and its confines of the community. And some of the negative effects that have been attributed to short-term rentals within residential neighborhoods are seen in a significant decrease within these areas due to that self-governance and those rules and regulations that they are able to carry out within that typical municipalities or other jurisdictions don't have those abilities to, outside of land use, et cetera. The North Carolina General Statute 47F or the Planned Community Act governs the creation, the operation, and destruction of these type of communities, and we'll say that these amendments were largely drafted based on that legislation circa 1999. So getting into the little bit of the meat of the proposed amendments, again, several sections would be affected by these amendments. We'll start with definitions, section 10.2. And the planned community neighborhood, again, this was largely based on the definition that's within the Planned Community Act, and it would be a contiguous area containing at least 20 acres or 20 units, included within a platted subdivision or condominium development for which any person, corporation, by virtue of ownership of a lot or dwelling unit within the planning community neighborhood is by declaration governed by a master's association that have the powers to enforce and amend rules and regulations and which are obligated to pay real property taxes, insurance premiums, or other expenses to maintain, improve, or benefit other lots or common areas, or other real estate described in such declaration. This is an ad that staff put on to try to help apply to older established planned communities, is that this definition would apply to those that were created prior to January 1st, 1999, that would elect to make that statute applicable to that planned community by whatever affirmed action of that supermajority of 67% of the votes. Definition for declaration, again, largely mirrors that in the statute. Any instruments, however, denominated that create a planned community neighborhood and any amendments to those instruments. Continuing definition, neighborhood lodging accommodation is the lodging use of a dwelling unit within a planned community neighborhood where the dwelling unit is leased, offered, or made available by short-term lease or other financial consideration for a time period less than 30 consecutive days, which is permitted through the declarations or other governing documents and is authorized or managed through the master association of the planned community neighborhood. Following master's association, the nonprofit organization established pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 47F 3101 or 47C 3101 by declaration or common law equivalent or other nonprofit organization formed prior to the North Carolina Planned Community Act and referenced in a declaration with powers to enforce and amend rules and regulations pursuant to 47F 3102 or 47C 3102 and/or by declaration or other governing documents and is responsible to maintain and provide for all maintenance of all common property and management of all neighborhood lodging accommodations within the planned community neighborhood. I know that's a lot to digest and a lot of words to go through, and hopefully it'll start to tie together. Chapter 8, the Table of Permitting Special Uses. So most of us are familiar, and those who are not, there's a table of uses that we designate as either permitted by right, permitted by right with special requirements, or is not permitted within certain zoning districts within the village's limits. So what these proposed amendments do would seat that neighborhood lodging accommodation use within the other lodging use section, and then the proposed X would then permit these type of uses as permitted by right within the residential zoning district. So that's the VR, the RMF, the R5, all the way through the very low-density, single-family residential zoning districts. These would also include a SR or special requirement 10, and that would also need to relocate the existing SR 10 to be moved to a reserved SR 23. So here's an example of what the table would look like with these proposed amendments. The highlighted row there, neighborhood lodging accommodation, corresponding permitted by right with special requirement zoning districts in the columns above, again, following with all the residential districts. The X, comma, SR, special requirement 10 on the last column, and there at the bottom row there would be the relocation of the dry cleaning and laundry services special requirement, which is currently SR 10, which would relocate to SR 23. So the SR, special requirement 10, we'll kind of go through, it says after effective date of this ordinance have passed, all neighborhood lodging accommodations are required to obtain a development permit by village staff. All neighborhood lodging accommodations, whether lawful, non-conforming uses, or newly established after effective date of this ordinance, have to comply with the following standards. The first there is compliance with SR 9 standards, number 1A through K. And for those that don't recall, those were like the minimum housing standards, the fire extinguisher be here, number of smoke detectors there, egress, et cetera. B, submission of documentation that the neighborhood lodging accommodation is located within a planned community neighborhood as defined in those aforementioned definitions. So you're seeing how they're tied together. We have those definitions. You have to provide documentation that the neighborhood lodging accommodation is within a planned community neighborhood. Submission of documentation that that neighborhood lodging accommodation has been authorized by the declaration. And finally, that the installation of a landscape screen per section 9.524A2 of the PDO along the property line of the adjacent residential use that is not part of the planned community So the comprehensive plan, again, I kind of touched on that at the beginning. When considering text amendments, governing boards and the advisory boards are to consider the comprehensive plan. Guiding principle 3 in the 2019 Comprehensive Plan on page 118 does recommend that the village needs to protect and enhance the quality and character of existing residential neighborhoods. It's pretty broad. Additionally, it does go further that the village should address short-term rentals. Again, we went through this in large part last year culminating with an action of ordinance 2215 last October. And it says further that the village should continue to monitor the legislative authority within the village to regulate short-term rentals and evaluate options to address the impacts on single-family neighborhoods. So again, village council adopted ordinance 2215, which did address the use of short-term rentals, new short-term rentals, within single-family neighborhoods. During those discussions, this topic of a different type of land use that is sort of self-managed within these type of communities arose, and there are specific management programs and, again, other rules and regulations that aren't typically enforced by staff or the local jurisdiction. And it could, and council agreed, that that topic warranted further discussion and further consideration. So staff feels that the proposed amendments are consistent with the broad guiding principle there of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan, and it does begin to address some distinction between lodging uses within residential planned communities that are managed by that community itself through an action of declarations, association that manages that type of use. The planning zoning board action, earlier this month during the regular meeting, the planning zoning board considered these text amendments and held a public hearing. There were, I believe, three members of the public that signed up to speak, and paraphrasing some of those comments or those subjects that were touched on were the background and the reasoning behind the proposal. Broad allowance for this type of use, and there were some suggestions that were given for maybe revisions to the amendments that could maybe apply more broadly to older established planned communities prior to the Planned Community Act. Members of the planning zoning board after deliberation or during deliberation expressed a concern over basically allowing the same or similar lodging use within planned communities, but not allowing for it in other residential communities. And after discussion, the planning zoning board did unanimously recommend that village council not adopt the proposed amendments. And then in making that recommendation, they did find that the amendments were not consistent with the 2019 Comprehensive Plan. So now the village council options. Hold the public hearing, which we're in now, receive the public comment, consider the recommendation of planning zoning board and the comprehensive plan. After doing such, you have the opportunity to continue the public hearing, to gather more input or comment on the proposal or other considerations. In doing so, you would need to, in the motion, state the specific time, date, and place. You can conclude the public hearing, but defer action and further deliberation to a following meeting. Date and time, please. You could adopt the proposed amendments I've drafted. Obviously, that is not the intent of the council this evening, to act on item 3 or 4, which would be to adopt the proposed amendments with provisions. 5, reject proposed amendments. Also, there is the option by definition in the PDO and the statute that if more things come about, sometimes these type considerations are deferred back to the planning zoning board for a further consideration or evaluation based on comments that have been made. So to kind of conclude with the staff presentation, again, these amendments were largely drafted based on direction that had been given to us following the discussions with the recently adopted short-term rental regulations about this type of land use within these type communities. Staff believes that the proposed amendments are not inconsistent with the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and could be carried out if adopted. Following the public hearing that the village council is holding tonight, staff would recommend that council carefully consider the recommendation of the planning zoning board and the public comments that are made on the proposal before taking action and following through on any of those options that are available to village council.
Alex, thanks. Just to clarify a couple of things for council on the one hand, and certainly all of our visitors here tonight. This plan was developed over several months' time after what I would say very intensive review by the village staff with the village council and other public who had testified in other public hearings on this matter. And this, in other words, has been, I would say, carefully developed. The village attorney has been involved and supports this proposal, as I understand it. And this hearing tonight is further evaluation by council members of those, of the public input and how we want to carry forward on this.
Yes, for a process of now of about five months, you know, we've been working together, not in a bubble, with three or four of us staff looking through it, consulting with the village attorney along the way. Obviously, we brung a very similar proposal or the draft to you guys in a work session in January, I believe.
Yes.
Got some feedback and moved forward to this evening.
Thank you. With that, I think it would be appropriate now to move into public comments. I have a list here with two names, and the first name is Don Hunter. Don, I believe that microphone is on, or you can sit at this desk right here if you prefer.
This is fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Don Hunter, 110 Highland Road. I represent the Country Club of North Carolina, where I'm the chief operating officer. We've been having this conversation now for 15 months. I just want to restate some of CCNC's position. Number one, we've never been part of the problem that you were trying to solve, though we feel caught up in this debate. Our rental owners are not absentee owners. They're members of a large organization. They're members of a club, and they share their homes with their fellow members. That's quite different. We're a benefit to this community, not a burden. We represent the third-largest property tax-paying organization in the city. Hospitals number one, or resorts number one, hospitals number two, and we're number three. That represents 13% of your budget. The debate at times have been very tense and regrettably tense at times. But we were honored when we were recognized as the gold standard in rental programs. We appreciate that. We agree with that. For over 60 years, CCNC has been a national club, providing long tradition of turning out-of-town friends into guests. You'd call them tourists, I guess. We've turned them from guests to members, from members to residents. That's our machine. That's how we have helped this community grow. We contribute to the vibrancy and the financial stability of this town. 40% or some 800 adults live in or around CCNC. They shop in your stores, they support your charities, they volunteer for your championships, they vote in your elections. We provide a large economic impact of over $30 million to this community on an annual basis. 60% of our members, however, do not live in Pinehurst. They provide $4 million in revenues to CCNC alone. That doesn't include what they spend when they're here in town, at gas stations and stores and coming into town to dinner, things like that. Those regional and national members become the future residents of Pinehurst. Some of them own rental properties, and they plan to own those rental properties until they retire, and then they will use those rental properties. That's how our system churns. They're not absentee owners. They're not trying to squeeze profits and leave a mess behind. They're the future of Pinehurst. In 1985, we were annexed with more than double the amount of rental homes that we have today. In 1985, we were annexed with more than double the amount of rental homes that we have today. To give you a frame of reference, we need to replace those homes. Obviously, we're not part of some over-tourism problem. CCNC is a private community where proper ownership is governed. It's governed by a board of members. You cannot buy property in CCNC unless you become a member first. In that membership process, you would be educated as to what is available at CCNC, our many amenities, our many programs, and yes, you would be educated about our rental program. So it comes as no surprise to members of CCNC that a home next door may or may not be a rental. Comes as no surprise. On October 26, when you voted on the ordinance change, you committed to a good-faith effort to respond to CCNC's concern, stating on the public record that CCNC is distinct and different. We agree with that. Mr. Pizzella told those in attendance that our concerns would be reasonably addressed. Today, we are reviewing your best work, and we see that our fundamental rights can be reasonably addressed. We concur that the legislation does not provide a path for unchecked growth of STRs, and it would not poorly affect the quality of life in Pinehurst. The ordinance is broad enough that communities can meet a very high standard of homeowner support with a great operational team. They certainly could do a rental program. But areas like Pinehurst Lakes, Donald Ross, probably Pinewild, and the Village Center would not be burdened with new rentals with this ordinance change. So we hope, as we always have, that our longstanding property right be restored as it was. We think this ordinance does this. Now, as you can see, there's a lot of people from CCNC here, and we specifically asked them not to speak. And I've been coming to these meetings now for 15 months, and you've been hearing from only me, and that was on purpose because we didn't want to stir up a lot of negative energy. But if I have accurately represented your views, please stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. The second speaker is Isabel Maddox.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Isabel Maddox, P.O., Box 946, Raleigh 27602. I'm also representing CCNC, but I want to talk on a little bit different perspective than what Don said. We have been working with staff on this text amendment, and we think it's well-done and it can address planned community neighborhoods. There are a couple tweaks that I've discussed with Alex I think he agrees with. He actually, we talked about it a little bit Friday, and he suggested a change, which really I agree with his change. But those are very minor. I think the important thing to note is that this text amendment categorizes the planned community neighborhoods, rentals of the planned community neighborhoods, as a totally different animal, a different land use, which it is. Rentals in these types of neighborhoods are self-contained. They have rules and regulations. They manage their own impacts, so there really are no impacts to the community at large. We believe this creates an objective standard that can apply to a number of different neighborhoods if they so choose. If they choose to not be included here, that's their choice. The STR ordinance, I know you hashed that over for many months, and that was to address a problem that had been identified in the town where these impacts were spilling over and causing problems. This was not CCNC causing the problems. Their rentals are very well-controlled, and they're all within the confines of their neighborhood. I want to talk for a second about the planning board action. They seem to not totally grasp the fact that we had been talking about this possible, and I had suggested it as a modification to what the STR ordinance says it was proposed back in the, back last year. They didn't seem to understand that that had been something that had been discussed by council and the public the whole time, that you guys had agreed to come back and address this later. They acted like, well, why would we do this? We just passed an STR ordinance. We shouldn't allow that, you know, like as if it was something brand-new. So I don't think they totally got that, well, this was raised and had been discussed, but you, the council, had agreed, we'll deal with this separately. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, I do think this can be adjudged to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It does address impacts to short-term, of short-term rentals, and it does look at a different option for managing those when you've got different impacts created because of the insulated nature of this use. So we do appreciate the council's consideration of this ordinance and would like you to adopt this with some minor amendments, which I've talked with Alex about as soon as possible. Thank you.
We'll take those suggestions under consideration. That's the whole purpose of the hearing, so thank you, Isabel. Those are the only two names I had sign up for the public hearing. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir, I see a hand in the back. If you would use that podium and please state your name and address.
I'm David Nordlo, 495 Lake Doronok Drive. I'm a resident of CCNC. I just want to draw attention to the conditions under which I, as a homeowner, have existed, have lived here for, or had property for 20 years, and many others have dealt with for 60 years. I'm going to quote from the covenants which are attached to my property, just briefly, and which are shared in some form by every piece of property sold within the confines of the Country Club of North Carolina. The real property, this is legal language, and I'm not good at it. "The real property above described is hereby made subject to the protective covenants and restrictions hereby declared for the purpose of ensuring the best use and the most appropriate development and improvement of Country Club and each building site in Royal Doronok Gulf Village," which is its formal platted name. "to protect Country Club and the owners of the building sites against such improper use of surrounding building sites as will depreciate the value of their property; to preserve, so far as practicable, the natural beauty of said property; to guard against the erection thereof of poorly-designed or proportioned structures and structures built of improper and unsuitable materials; to ensure the highest and best development of such property," and so on. In other words, we're living with a whole variety of restrictions, and I will quote just briefly another section of the same covenants. Again, "Some version of these is attached to every piece of property bought and sold within the confines of the Country Club of North Carolina." Excuse me, I found the wrong, turned to the wrong page, I think. "No noxious or offensive trade or activity shall be carried on upon any building site, nor shall anything be done thereon which may be or become an annoyance or nuisance to the neighborhood. No signs or billboards shall be erected or maintained on the premises. No trade materials or inventories may be altered upon the site. No professional trade organization or professional business may be conducted there." And finally, "The premises subject to these restrictions shall not be altered, leased, rented, conveyed, or otherwise alienated, nor shall the title or possession thereof pass to another without the written consent of the Country Club or its successors and assigns." Those are the restrictions with which I live and everybody resident in my neighborhood lives. So if we're concerned about the kind of activity that goes on in the Country Club of North Carolina in particular, at least as one example of the kind of land use now being presented to you, I offer my covenants and those of my neighbors as an example of the process under which we have, insofar as possible, established control over maintenance of our properties in a way to protect ourselves as well as the rest of the village of Pinehurst. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nordlo. Is that a document that you want to turn over to the village clerk for our consideration, or can you do that?
I'll be glad to do that.
I think we have it, but if you, if that's a new.
Probably a couple of other hundred people have it as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on this public hearing, number one? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? And we'll end into a brief discussion among council members as we take in these new pieces of information. Is there a motion?
I move to adjourn the public hearing, number one, and re-enter the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Pat Pizzella to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The public hearing is closed. We're now back in regular meeting. Interested in the comments from the public. As always, the council will consider this continuing information and new information provided tonight. As I said earlier, we're not going to make a decision tonight on this because we want to evaluate, again, what we've heard. This ordinance, these text amendments, will apply across the board to all our residential neighborhoods, and again, as I mentioned earlier, have been developed by village staff with public input and including the village attorney over some time, and we appreciate the input that the club has given as a part of that process, among others. Are there comments from the council members on this particular hearing, number one? Patrick?
If anyone would like to start, otherwise I'll have some comments to make.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, I want to thank Alex for his excellent presentation, and my compliments to the spokesman for CCNC for your professional presentation and your well-mannered members who are in attendance. Certainly a very disciplined group of people out there. And I think I make a small correction. I think you're the second-biggest property taxpayer in the village of Pinehurst, because I think the one you think is the second-biggest really doesn't pay property taxes. Okay. But let's get on with the issue at hand. I attended the March 2nd Planning and Zoning Meeting, and I've reviewed the video twice now. I often attend these meetings at the Planning and Zoning Board because I find them very educational, whether they are covering a topic of real interest to me or not. The proposed text amendments creating the planned community neighborhoods and the neighborhood lodging accommodations are both practical and equitable, in my opinion. The Planning and Zoning Board focused their findings and recommendations on two items which they referred back to the council. I'm going to read them precisely because this is the question before us. The proposed text amendments, according to the Planning and Zoning Board, are not consistent with the adopted 2019 comprehensive long-range plan. Guiding principles three to live recommends in part that the village should, quote, "protect and enhance the quality and character of existing residential neighborhoods." That is precisely what this proposed amendments do, precisely what they do. The amendments, not only do they protect, we've heard from one community tonight, but there are probably, in the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, one member estimated there are up to 30, 30 neighborhoods that could be affected by the adoption of these amendments, aside from the obvious ones of CCNC and Pinewild. There are 30 others that could be affected by this. The second thing they said is additionally, "The comprehensive plan includes a subsection titled 'Address Short-Term Rentals,' ending with 'Implementation Strategy,' which states, quote, 'Continue to monitor the legislative authority of the village to regulate short-term rentals and evaluate options to address the impacts of short-term rentals on single-family neighborhoods.'" These amendments before you do precisely that. They address the impact of STRs on single-family neighborhoods. Planning and Zoning Board is composed of many accomplished individuals who often express a variety of opinions, and that's one of the reasons I enjoy attending it. Many of them, at the hearing, they conducted, complimented Alex Cameron, as you just heard me compliment him, who heads our Planning and Inspections, on how well-written the amendments to the ordinance were. That's a quote. One member referred to them as tailored as can be. That's another quote. As Alex told the Planning and Zoning Board that the staff recommends approval of the amendments being submitted by the council, as he restated tonight. But the Planning and Zoning Board raised three issues, which I'd further like to address in addition to the, what I think is their incorrect view of our consistency with the comprehensive long-range plan. One issue they raised had to do with a hypothetical developer who, planning a neighborhood, would be, would keep 67% of the lots in this planned neighborhood that he'd be putting together aside, and he would sell the remaining lots. And after he sold a third of them, he would say, voila, I am now going to propose that we change the declarations that I presented to you all when you bought your property because I have 67% of the vote, and we're going to change this and make them all short-term rentals. Now, I submit to you that the likelihood of such a thing happening is about as likely as at our next Pinehurst Pet Parade, you see a unicorn marching down the middle of the street. That is not how developers operate. And so they were chasing after the unicorn. One Planning and Zoning Board member observed that he might, and I think he said this with tongue-in-cheek because I could see the tongue coming out of his cheek, but he said that he might have voted for these amendments if they had been proposed before the STRs were proposed last year, and he would have approved them then. Well, perhaps he would have. Finally, one member asked a question to his fellow members, and he posed it very interestingly. He says, and it dovetails with some of the comments we heard earlier tonight. He says, "Would it be correct to assume that the existing property owners in gated communities," he cited CCNC, but others could be concerned, "had assumed that the same grandfathering that was allowed elsewhere in the village of Pinehurst would apply to them?" And several responses from PNC board members was yes. That's a natural assumption. So we should remind ourselves that, going back to the beginning, the earlier ordinance we adopted last year, that it was adopted because of significant concerns over the amount of and the rapid proliferation of short-term rentals in our community and their impact on the historical ambience and quality of life in the village. And that we adopted that because that really, that statement represented the majority of citizens' views in this village. I don't, I think we're being inconsistent with that continuing responsibility with what's before us tonight as a proposed amendment. Finally, I'd like to close with a, a thought that was left to me some 50 years ago by my family physician. I asked, in the indulgence of our only doctor here on the panel, as I use something he's probably heard many times in his life. But it has to do with the idea of when you first see something or hear something and people try to present to you that this is X, or this is Y, or this is Z, that it's not only what you think you're, what you're hearing is not always correct. The expression was, and I was going to the doctor complaining about every little thing that I thought my, I thought I was at the end of my rope, and he tried to relax me, and he said, he said, "I learned very early," he said, "in my first day in medical school, that when you hear the sound of hoofbeats, think horses, not zebras. What's being proposed tonight are horses of amendments, not zebras. This is very practical, very equitable. I'm prepared to vote on these amendments whenever my colleagues are. The sooner the better. I welcome, though, to see what tweaks have been suggested and other tweaks that may be suggested, and I'd like to have a further discussion with staff on those. But I want to compliment the staff who have put in a lot of work on this to try to make it both practical and equitable, as I've said, and reflective of our earlier decisions when it came to short-term rentals, which was to really protect, protect our community... when it came to short-term rentals, which was to really protect, protect our community, protect our residents, and our single-family neighborhoods in a way that was practical, which is why we allowed other short-term rentals to continue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there other comments from council members for the good of the order? Jeff?
Just got a few. And kudos to Mr. Pizzella on identifying a true medical saying on there. We definitely need to think horses and not unicorns, or zebras, rather. There's also another saying in medicine. It says, first, do no harm. And the ban that was placed in our community did some harm, and that's a ripple effect of what happened to CCNC. And so now we're doing a very common thing in government, which is addressing the laws of unintended consequences. CCNC should have never lost their ability to do short-term rentals. Period. They weren't a problem. I think it's very clear from what we heard, and it's a vibrant portion of our community. So I am also prepared to vote at any time in addressing this, because I do think it is the right thing to do. Now, the other part of this, that the unintended consequences of what this is going to occur, is that there's an equity issue, because you have a lot of other people in the town who cannot do this, because they're not part of a big community like this. That equity issue is not something that I'm willing to say CCNC can't do what is appropriate. I just want to recognize that we have that issue, and the issue came because we created a ban. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other comments?
John.
Other comments?
Yes, just please.
Did you?
All right. I have three points. First, Jeremy, I'm delighted you are here. I failed to thank you and your Planning and Zoning Board when we considered cottages at number eight, and I want to thank you for that. And this, you have, I think, the hardest-working board that this village may have ever seen. But I, too, watched your video a couple of times. Actually, I want to incorporate my reference to that section of your video, from forty-four minutes and fifteen seconds to one hour and twelve minutes, and some of the comments that especially stood out to me, and I'm not quoting verbatim, these are my notes from watching it, but Matt Jones commented that the landscape buffer is odd and shows further division. I agree with that. That the land use is the same as in a different area. I agree with that. David Alzamore's comment that this proposal leaves an odd taste and is overly burdensome, which I'll get to in a second. Paul Roberts says this proposal creates the haves and the have-nots, and I can do it, but you can't. I agree with that. Jack Farrell's comments at fifty-three minutes and twenty-three seconds said there's no widespread community desire or need for this. Number two, implementing a land use that neighboring properties does not have. Jeff Morgan, that goes to your point. Sonya even says at fifty-five minutes and forty seconds, feels like we're giving special permission to a special group of people. And finally, Jeremy, you maybe have had one of the best sayings that night, who's governing who. And then, Jeremy, you pointed out at least a couple of times the unusual unanimity of your board, and it's been said that it was just a recommendation, but I take, I have watched your hearings, and your board is so thoughtful and so careful. They come at it with different points of view, and they're all sound and solid points of view, so I really appreciate the thorough and responsible job you do. Second thing, and I'm sure I have a different experience with this, with amending covenants with a private community, but several years ago, I got to sit in on a presentation given by the president of one of, it's a large property management company in North Carolina, and they manage residential properties and commercial properties, but one thing he spoke about directly was how difficult it is in amending covenants, and it's, I don't know why, legal landscape or whatever, but I was able to track him down today to ask him, is it still a legal minefield to amend covenants? And he said, yes. He mentioned to me a Supreme Court case recently that came out. I didn't need to get into the detail, but it was important for me to hear that covenants are difficult to amend. And he also said, and I think I'd heard this in another context before, but if you have a mortgage on your house, your mortgage company is also considered an owner, so they might have to be brought into process. And CCNC may want to go through this, but I don't think CCNC should be put through the burdensome process of amending their covenants so they can have new short-term rentals. And to Jeff Morgan's points, they have the right to rent their property. And Jeff, I said I had three points. My third one kind of goes to what you and I touched on in our hearing when we adopted twenty-two fifteen, and I said, maybe this is a situation where private property rights and zoning are going to have a head-on collision. And Pat, I'm not saying we're going to have a lawsuit, but one important thing is since that meeting, when we voted on that ordinance, the composition of our North Carolina Supreme Court has changed significantly. We now have three new justices. The Chief Justice, Paul Newby, is a very, very strong property rights person and constitutional expert. You've now got three conservative justices who also, I would expect, believe in property rights, so the composition of the Supreme Court may have some bearing if we look at our litigation risk, which we're supposed to do. So anyway, those are my three points. And CCNC, I've had a lot of you guys reach out to me and ask me to support this, and I have to say, I have to represent the entire community, not just CCNC. And it's hard for me to say that, but it's the reality. We are elected to represent all of the residents of Pinehurst. So, thank you.
Other comments, Jane, that you'd like to make?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but very briefly, the purpose of land use regulation is not to pit the local government against the developer or the landowner who wants to do something with their property. That's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it is to create a balance between one person using their property or seeking to develop their property, and the folks around them who are already there. And it is a very difficult thing to do, and it does take reasonable evaluation of the impacts on both sides of it. And to say, well, all the cards ought to be with either the developer or land user versus all the cards have to be with the surrounding folks, doesn't work that way. It's got to be a balance. And so I'm going to stand by our short-term rental ordinance that we passed in the fall. We did it for the reason that we had significant concerns and expressions of the reduction of the quality of life in our residential neighborhoods from the rapid increase in the number of short-term rentals, many of which were not being operated well by folks on the ground. And this new proposal is not, in my opinion, inconsistent with that short-term rental ban, because this is crafted with the intention of addressing the problems with short-term rentals that are in unincorporated areas by eliminating the surprise intrusion into a residential neighborhood, because you've got a declaration that tells folks who buy in a homeowners association what the rules of the game are going to be there, because you have management on the ground, and because you would have a buffer between the homeowners' association and nearby unincorporated residential areas. So I also thank Alex and our staff for their hard work on this. I know we're going to want to consider this as we go forward, but I think it's, it is a well-crafted response to a very difficult situation. By way of example, I just very quickly will say, we do, in the village and in the county and in North Carolina as a whole, consider ways to allow somebody to make a new type of development of their property by making amendments to the zoning map or to the development ordinance all the time. We do, that's rezoning or conditional rezoning. We do that all the time. I don't think there's any problem looking for ways to do that. So I'll leave it at that, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for all of the comments. We will continue to evaluate this with staff. We appreciate the public's input very much over the period of time here. And with that, I think we don't need a motion to close the hearing, because we have, but we will move on to the next agenda item, and I want to get to that right away.
I move to recess the regular meeting.
For those of you that are leaving, if you could leave in as quiet as possible, because we have another presentation to make.
I'm sorry, wrong thing.
We are in a regular meeting, and we'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine.
Yeah.
And I'll ask Jeff Sanborn to make the introduction, please.
All right. We've got another group of special guests in the room here today. I think a lot of people know by now, but maybe a lot of people don't know otherwise. Our Pinehurst Twelve-and-Under Girls Basketball Team recently won the state championship, and so we just want to take the opportunity to recognize them. Thank you all for waiting patiently in the back there. I know you've got other things to move on to, but I think I'll turn it over to Mark.
Yes, and Mark, you're coming to the microphone. With Mike Apke and parents and players, I'd like you all to come forward and be a part of this recognition here. So please come forward.
So while they're coming up to the front, so you can see them and we can get a good picture, we appreciate the opportunity of you letting us bring them here tonight, the undefeated championship, twelve U SWAC championship team. So congratulations to them. Our department has been participating in statewide athletic committee tournaments for a number of years. We have had a previous championship with a team that was split between Pinehurst Southern Pines, I believe. I want to recognize just a couple of people, and then we'll let Mike say a few words, because a lot of these young ladies do have to get to other practices tonight. So I just want to thank first Dave White, our Recreation Superintendent. He ran tournaments for two weekends in March, a sectional tournament, which our girls won, and then the state tournament the following weekend. Dave did an exceptional job. This is why we built the community center in Park, so that we could host these types of events. So we're very happy to be able to do that, and Dave and his staff did an excellent job. And before Dave goes up, he's got something for this team. But I do want to recognize the coaches. Mike Apke, obviously everybody knows Mike, our Public Services Director, and Nicole Bimbo. She is our Recreation Program Coordinator. So both of these volunteer coaches are village staff members who give their time in the evenings after we are done with the long workday. So Dave, if you want to present the plaque, or Mike, do you want to say some words first? I'll turn it over to you.
Good luck, ladies.
I'm going to get my picture with the plaque.
I can have everybody shift over this way, so that we're not in an awkward, not one more awkward. No, Mayor, you're with us. Get in with us. All right. You're almost all taller than Nicole.
That's why they won.
Definitely taller than me, so. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you all for being here, and that's all the work that you did. I know I've been members of the team, I know I hardly work, and I know this all happens. If you're up for the next court event of the spring, I hope you do the same thing you did today.
Is this on? Okay. I just want to say a couple of things. It was really a privilege and an honor to coach these girls. I want to echo what Mark said about Dave White and his staff. They did a fantastic job running two tournaments, the sectional tournament and then the state tournament. It was a first-class, both of them were first-class events, and we really truly do have a first-class facility here with the Cannon Park Community Center. We had people come in from out of town both weekends, and I can't tell you how many people went into that facility and said, wow, wish we had something like this in our community. So that facility truly is a blessing to us. I want to thank the parents, too, of the girls that were selected to the team. These are some busy girls, okay? We've got soccer players, we've got volleyball players, we've got lacrosse players, they're involved in their church activities, they're involved in community activities, and just getting them to practice on time was a bit of a challenge for the parents. So thank you, guys, for all of that. But the other thing I want to thank the parents about, we had an absolutely amazing atmosphere in the community center. The cheering that these parents did, they invited friends, they invited family, we had teachers from the girls' schools, we had principals from the girls' schools. It was our own March Madness in the Cannon Park Community Center. It really was. We had a local group of high school students that came, that are involved in the Young Life of the Sandhills program that Greg and Lucy Noble run. They made signs for our girls, and I think it was after the state semifinal game, we played Carteret County, who was a really good team, and we beat them, and we got done, and we were talking, I think it was Sarah, raise your hand, Sarah. Sarah said, you know why we won that game, Coach? And I said, why? And she said, well, it was because of the crowd, and how loud it was, and the support that we got. So thank you, guys, so much for all that you did with that as well. These girls are amazing. When they were selected for the team, this was not a team that I just selected, or Dave selected, or Nicole selected. All the coaches who coached in the rec league got a ballot, and it didn't say on there, just pick the best players. It said to pick the girls that you thought had the talent and the character to represent the village of Pinehurst. And the character thing was a big thing to me, particularly with us as a host. Like, we wanted to make sure we were representing the village well, and these girls did an absolutely amazing job of that. So it wasn't easy. We won most of our games in the sectional tournament by, it wasn't easy, but we won them fairly comfortably until the championship game. And then, when we played in the state tournament, it was a whole different animal. I think every single game came down to the final possession, which was not good for my blood pressure or my heart. And in the state championship game, we played Fuquay Varina. We were down almost the whole game, finally came back, made it close at the end. We were down by one, and Pearl Hague, raise your hand, Pearl. I'm going to call you out. Pearl got fouled with 3.2 seconds left on the clock, had to go to the free throw line, and if she didn't make a free throw, we probably don't win that game. I was nervous for her. Her father, John, who's standing back there, I looked across at him, he was like this, like he couldn't look, and Pearl stepped up, made a free throw, sent it into overtime, and we were able to win the state championship. So really, really cool. Super proud of these girls. We had a really good time, and they definitely deserve it. I want to thank Nicole Bimbo, too, for being my assistant coach. If you see me coach up and down the sidelines, I get pretty loud, and I know I'm talking and yelling and doing things, and Nicole's much more composed and quiet and all that, so I think we complement each other well. So thank you, guys. Really appreciate you, guys. Do you want to say anything or not? Told you she's quiet, so. But anyway, thank you all very much. I appreciate you recognizing these girls today. So let me recognize them real quick, just in order here. Kate Noble, raise your hand, Kate Noble. Emily Tuttle. Bessa Hague. Joel. Sarah Grantham. Caroline Antil. Brooklyn Rigan. Virginia Gray Sutton. And we had two who couldn't be here today, Lily Rembetsy and Sophie Itigie. So thank you all very much. So, thank you all very much.
We are at item number 10 on our agenda. I would recommend we take a very short break, unless the council wants to proceed. We'll take a break until 6:05. Let's come back right away and get on to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Very enthusiastic about the amendments, actually wished we had had them a little bit sooner. Staff too. And then so the recommendation was unanimously that village council adopt the proposed amendments as drafted and found them to be consistent with the comp plan. So again, your options are same as the other options you have with these other P D O text amendments. You can continue the hearing, you can conclude and defer action to another meeting, you can adopt as drafted, you could adopt with suggested revisions, you could reject, or you could consider to refer it back to the planning zoning board for their consideration. With that, I'll conclude that obviously staff who had drafted these amendments would ask that village council adopt them and find them consistent with the comp plan, please.
Alex, we'll get into the public comments here. In fact, there are no signed up at this point. This all started a few months ago and we had some retaining wall issues, at least on one that I recall, I think there might have been two throughout town. What did we learn from that that led to this? And is this taking our ordinance forward sufficiently into the future for what we see happening?
Sure, thank you. So to further elaborate on what we had come before us at end of late summer last year and into the end of the year, we had a couple of situations where how we had historically been interpreting or applying the standards in the ordinance that would not allow for significant height retaining walls, up to six feet or better. We could not prohibit them from being in certain setbacks or keep them out of the areas. Basically, you could have them as part of the primary structure attached to the building, you could have them as an accessory structure, they could meet those type setbacks, they would have heights that would be six feet, sometimes even higher. And obviously, we had some issues with some walls that were erected and were erected very close to the property line, almost right up to the property line, varied in height from three feet up to a little over six. So this will be able, these amendments will help us have clear standards that we can interpret, administer, and enforce if need be.
Let me just ask the public that's here, are there any public comments that would like to be made on this item? This gentleman approaching.
Alex Bonus, 15 James River Place. Alex, are there any restrictions on fences in private alleys?
There are not. We, you know, the situation we've dealt with before is that a lot of our existing alleyways are not truly platted rights of way. They meander and they vary from private property line to private property line. So our allowances for fences, so again, not necessarily part of these amendments, would be applicable to up to the property line depending on the height, or if there's a side street, corner lot provision, or a golf course or lakefront.
It would have seemed that the North Carolina legislature, which land that has been in public use for 20 years, would deem that to be public land, and you would not allow a fence going down someone's alley.
Don't quote me on this, but I do believe that those provisions would have to be granted by a judge unless something's preemptive legislatively.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonus. Any other public comments on this hearing number two? Is there a motion to close?
I just want a question, Alex. Did the Historic Preservation Commission also face an issue about retaining walls along a golf course at a meeting, or was it only the Planning and Zoning Board in the last few months?
You're probably thinking the Board of Adjustment.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing number two and reenter the regular meeting?
I move to adjourn the public hearing number two and reenter the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Jane Hogman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Pozella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, we're back into the regular meeting. Is there any discussion on this public hearing and this proposal?
I just have a question. Alex, at P and Z, you mentioned the state building code is being changed, but I don't recall that you elaborated in a, what was it? What is it that they're doing that might impact this, or how is what we're doing not going to be impacted by that?
It's really just, the North Carolina State Building Code is going to apply regardless. It's just being able to, again, articulate that, have that information that we can provide to the builders, that the building code is going to apply, and we just were very generically saying that, you know, it's got to be built to those standards. The changes that I'm referring to now is the current standard is that if the amount of fill or the height separation between the fill side and the non-fill side is four feet or greater, the retaining wall must be engineered. So the amendments are going to be that that height separation now is going to be five feet instead of four feet.
Okay, and they seem to discuss at great length the engineering standard that would be required if certain parameters were, if certain thresholds were exceeded, correct?
Yeah, and that would be those standards.
Okay. And I still, you know, you've got state building codes, you've got local building codes. I want to get up to speed a little bit better on that, but, you know, to me, I don't know how builders, well, this is what they do for a living, but there seem to be so many different requirements along the way that they have to satisfy before they can put that first shovel on the ground, correct?
Of course, regulations vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and that is a large part in what, I know especially our planning zoning specialists and our staff, that's what they do day to day. It's emails, it's phone calls, you know, consult with us, talk to us, pick up the phone, we'll help you go through what our specific requirements are that are on top of the provisions that apply statewide.
Okay. That was my only question.
Any other questions for Alex from the council members?
No.
Therefore, is there a motion to approve, it would be motion number 13?
Yes. I was about to ask. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, that's Ordinance 2309, text amendment for regulating retaining walls.
Carry on.
As proposed?
As proposed.
And find the amendments are consistent with 2019 comprehensive plan.
Yes, I was reading the shorthand. Thank you, Doctor.
I second.
Motion by Pat Pozella, second by Jeff Hogan, Jeff Morgan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. We'll move on to public hearing number three. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting and enter the public hearing?
I move to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number three.
That's a motion by Lady Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Pozella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, we're in public hearing number three. Mr. Sandborn.
All right, this one is also kind of a cleanup situation. I think all of you are aware that historically, for horse shows, we have allowed RVs on the harness track facility. However, there is no provision allowing that in our development ordinance currently. And so, in order to continue to offer that opportunity in the future, we think we need to amend, we're asking you to amend the development ordinance to allow RV hookups in the PC district, which the district pertains to the harness track. That's not all that this is about, however, because we, I think you also are aware that we have had, we've been dealing with suggestions over a period of a number of years from trainers, harness track trainers, that we were missing out on some business with regard to bringing horses in for training because we don't offer RV hookups for, to supplement that package of amenities, if you will, at the harness track. And so, if you do approve the amendment or something like the amendment that's been proposed, then that would allow that opportunity in the future. Of course, we'd have to come back to the council, you know, with a specific plan about where we're going to put them, and how many of them, and under what conditions that we would rent them and so forth. But this would at least get the zoning correct so that we can, one, continue to do what we have been historically doing with horse shows, and two, offer that expanded opportunity for our trainers of our standardbred horses in the future. So, go ahead, Alex.
Well, Jeff took care of most of it. So again, public hearing number three, to officially kind of get the hearing record straight, is considered these text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, which would allow for the use of land for temporary rental only upon which recreational vehicles or RVs would be allowed in the public conservation or PC district. And it would amend the following sections, 8.51A, Table permitted, special uses and special requirements, and Section 10.2 definitions. Again, Jeff covered the background on the request pretty well there, and sort of what began the work in the planning staff as far as trying to help after consulting with Parks and Rec and administration through how to clean up this item and allow for that opportunity. Little history that RVs, or at least hookups, have been there and been provided at the facility there since at least about 2002, and others may have more historical knowledge on that. This amendment would allow those leases on that area for the training season as part of an equestrian event that has been rented to the facility, and would be able to stay and hook up to the facilities from the dates of October through May, and that would be starting potentially this fall if these amendments are adopted. So here you'll be able to see what the amendments would do to the table. Again, there at the end, recreational vehicle park, X permitted by right, just in the PC district. We'll get to a little bit better visual in a minute just to see just exactly what kind of impacts that could have village-wide. Definition, so we have a current definition of recreational vehicle park. You can see the changes provided in the red strike through format here, getting rid of the commercial enterprise, starting with the use of land which includes two or more spaces, temporary rental only, provided utility hookups and services. And this was a change that came about during the planning zoning board hearing, to allow for permissive language instead of sounding more mandatory that if offered, services such as laundry, sanitation, storing, storage, vending machines, et cetera, shall only be provided by that facility operator. So again, that would be the village, that if we're offering it, we are the ones that would be providing that, not someone else. Here's a map showing all those properties within the village's jurisdiction that are zoned PC or public conservation. There's only a couple of properties that are not owned by the village of Pinehurst that are zoned PC. Those are areas that are owned by Moore County, which would be the landfill site and sites there at Juniper Creek Road, I'm sorry, Juniper Lake Road, there at the northern end of our jurisdiction. And then the Village Chapel, which is actually conditionally zoned PC as of, I believe it was May 2020. And they tailored their uses and conditioned their uses narrowly with that conditional zoning approval. So this would not be permitted on that property. Comprehensive plan, again, we've been considering that a lot this evening. Guiding Principle 7, all things green, it says that, you know, we should preserve, conserve, and feature Pinehurst natural resources with expanding parks, open spaces, and events that can enhance the health and well-being of the community environment, and that the village should further seek ways to enhance strategic partnerships with other public and private entities in order to expand and enhance recreation facilities and programs that are offered. Planning and zoning board had a busy evening of public hearings, as you guys are this evening. Earlier this month, they were favorable to the approach, and then again, provided some friendly amendments to, again, be permissive to if offered, those services shall be provided by the facility operator. They unanimously recommend village council adopt the proposed amendments and found them consistent with the 2019 comprehensive plan. Same options with this council has with these amendments as the previous, continue the hearing, continue or defer action to a later meeting date, adopt as drafted, adopt with some amendments, reject, or potentially refer the proposal back. Again, kind of based on the guidance that's been provided on the discussions with the village, and discussions that I know has been talked about with village council, staff does recommend that we can carry these out, that could help expand the offerings there at the harness track property, and recommend that village council adopt the amendments and adopt a statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Alex. Could you go back to the map, please? Draw that back up. And could you just identify where all these properties are? And what does the striping mean versus the solid green down here? I think we know that, but just so we all have it.
Okay, so the striping, and some of this may not be quite updated based on the recent swap here at Juniper Lake here. So here's Juniper Lake Road, northern stint. The stripe is supposed to indicate those properties which are owned by the village of Pinehurst.
Okay.
So any areas that are not striped, you know, there's a landfill site, and it's very hard to see at this scale, but right here, you can see the village green, and here's the village chapel property. So all these other sites, here's West Pinehurst Park, here's the area where we're currently at, here's Cannon Park, here's the harness track properties, some area there that we own, the, I'll call them lakes.
Those are in the lake, isn't it?
Ponds.
That's right, yeah. What is it?
They're ponds.
Two ponds.
Two ponds, okay. Right, so if it's striped, we own it.
Correct.
Right? So, RVs could be allowed in all of those areas under the way this is written?
If the village would want them.
Council wanted them there, yeah.
Okay. It's still up to us to make that decision because it's village-owned. Council would have to decide to allow RVs in any or all of these areas at some point, if it was requested, right?
And under what parameters, or what restrictions, or how many?
Okay. And my concern, which village manager and I talked about a little earlier today is, we're, just looking at the track, where will we want to put these? And I think Jeff, your point, which you made a little earlier, again, is sometime pretty soon, I guess, we'd have to decide where we're going to allow these to exist, and this would start potentially in the fall, I guess, at this point.
Where and if?
John, I am...
Allows you that flexibility.
All right. Jane, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One is, the large green area at the bottom of the map, that's the landfill.
Yeah.
That's owned by the county.
Yeah.
But it's zoned PC. And it's in our ETJ, I guess. Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem doing this for our harness track program, present and future, but I think it might be worth it to have some kind of a special requirement or something that identifies that, that either ties it to the harness track use, or ties, you know, maybe, do we need to think about a timing over the course of the year because we have, it's a limited time now, I don't know, limit the number of them, or to say it can only be done by the, can we even say it can only be done by the village? Maybe we do that by tying it to the harness track use.
Didn't...
And are there some of these areas, like West Pinehurst Park, or Cannon Park, where we don't want to have, or even the landfill area, where we don't want to have RVs springing up? Because the way it's written now, it's any old RVs.
Yes, the answer is, if you don't want them there, then don't approve them there.
But they would be as of right. They would be as of right.
Well, with the exception of the county land, those rights belong to you.
The village.
This allowance would just be to pass the first test. That first test would be that if the village were to agree to have that type of accommodation on any of these sites, then we were not running afoul of the P D O or zoning regulations, which historically we may actually have been.
Okay, okay, okay. But we've got the county with a big piece of land, you know, I don't know.
Seemed like a very appealing place to park an IV, but...
Yeah, but you never know.
Maybe not for a few years.
And if they did, it'd be really, would we be concerned if there were RVs at the landfill?
Probably not.
I do have one question. Do we have an idea of the possible amount of spots that we're talking about at the track? Just ballpark, or better than ballpark?
No more than four or five.
Oh, that's all?
That's all. And the question was posed about where on the property it might be from a staff standpoint. We've looked at a couple of locations. One is between barns nine and 10, down where the greenhouse parking lot is, so it's not something that would be visible by anybody off property. You'd have to be on the track property or that parking lot, that's resort property. But it would have to be screened. I'm sure Alex would make us do that if we did put it there. If that was the location, we would have to relocate a paddock and probably clear some trees behind barn 10 to relocate the paddock to, or we build a paddock somewhere else where we have some space. The other location that we looked at was the overflow lawn area that is behind the Fair Barn parking lot, kind of between the Fair Barn and the greenhouse. That site could be doable. That's going to be a little more visible. When you have weddings, events, trade shows at the Fair Barn during training season, you would have the potential to see RVs there. Now, from a staff perspective, we're only looking at this during training season, so October 15th to May 1st every year. That would be the only time that we would allow them to stay on the grounds, with the exception of the weekend horse shows, which are happening now. We do not propose to install any facilities. We're going to provide water and power. So they would have to have a company come in to pump out their tanks, similar to what happens to portageons that are on-site now. So that's not something that's not already happening. So that's really the only intent of this. This was a request by the driving and training club. We've had trainers reach out to the track superintendent and said, hey, if I could bring my RV, we would be there. Is that 15, 20, 30 horses? Until I see the contract, I won't guarantee you we're going to have an extra horse from this, but our understanding is that we would have an increase in horses, probably around 30, if we allowed this.
Mark. I'm just surprised that there were so few. We're talking about four or five spots.
Right. It's not many. And we have concerns, we've talked about it internally. What are they going to look like, you know? We hope they're all brand new, but that's probably not the case. But these are trainers that are bringing these, so we do think they'll be of pretty good quality. But, you know, if we want to get down into the weeds and really dictate, must be this year or newer, must have a certain appearance, we could do that, but I think that's going to be cumbersome.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think it, the year of the RV may not matter, it depends on how it's maintained.
Right.
What's the likelihood, or has it come up in your discussions, that the trainers would want the RV located much closer to the barns where their particular horses are?
I haven't really heard too much about that. They just indicated they want it on-site. So we tried to pick a couple of locations that would be less visible to the public.
And this covers the fact that they would, they would be mandated to use our water and electrical hookup.
Correct.
So they can only go to where those hookups are established.
That's correct. And we would have to establish fees for, you know, is it a monthly or a seasonal rental for that space, how we're going to handle utilities. So if this is approved, now it's on us to go and do our homework and figure out what's the appropriate fee, how are we going to manage this, where's it going to be, what's the surface going to be like, so.
I know you've mentioned for a few years, Mark, as you've said in this, that there is this issue around, and we've had some RVs there before.
Correct.
My concern, I think the council probably shares it, and you do too, is if we allowed these RVs to kind of be anywhere on the property or near the barns, it starts to take away from the look of the track, and that's not in our best interest, I think.
Correct.
So, to the degree that the location of these will be, you know, back in the woods somewhere, which I think would be a more likable placement of them from a trainer's point of view, that sends to make some sense. But I would be concerned if we allowed them in other places beyond the track, and not off where they're not really seen.
It would only be our intention to do it in one location on the property, not multiple.
Yeah.
Now, could we maybe get more than four or five, depending on the location? Possibly, but, you know, I think we want to see, are we going to get the return on the investment by doing this first before, you know, maybe we could go to 10 if we're in that area, but, you know, we don't want to impact the day-to-day operations of the barns and the trainers coming out of the stalls. So we want to make sure that it's not something that's going to impact their training.
And I'd imagine, though, if we offer this, the demand might go up, because how many, how many different training entities do we have by owner or trainer? I mean, are there six, 10 at this point? There's at least six, aren't there?
Roughly, we have about 15 trainers on the property this season, 171 horses right now. We've got 10 more that are supposed to come from another track.
Right.
Before season ends. So our numbers are increasing, but if we do this and the trainers bring the horses that they said they would, if this amenity was available, we could be close to capacity next season.
Because if that's 15 trainers, that's 15 RVs hypothetically, we would have a hard time doing that.
No, 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 we would only allow five, yeah. However many spaces we have is, and not every trainer, you know, a lot of our trainers own homes.
Yeah, they own homes here.
So it's a smaller group that would benefit from this, yeah.
That answers my questions. Are there other questions from council on this issue?
Just a comment. I went out to see the horses trained today, and Scotty showed me by barn six, in between barns nine and 10, and I appreciated his sensitivity. He must have heard us last year. He appreciated our sensitivity to the aesthetics, and how back by six, where you guys are thinking about it, you can't see it from the parking. And also between nine and 10, that seems like a great location. He even is thinking through the water hookups and this and that. But, you know, another thing that you said at P and Z is we've lost 35 trainers with, we've lost three trainers with 35 horses. I was thinking, one trainer, one horse. No, it's one trainer, one RV, 10 horses.
Correct.
So you get additional trainer in here. That's additional horses, additional stall space. But while I've got you, can you explain our grooming quarters? Like, are our grooming quarters now fully utilized, or can we get them to the point where they should be fully utilized? I just don't understand the grooming quarters, what we have, and what the potential is there.
We have approximately 20 rooms on the property, spread out over various barns, probably six or seven barns that have rooms. We renovated barn 14 last year, which had seven rooms, and that is a much nicer facility than it was before. In the budget request this year, we're looking at doing two other barns that have five rooms and four rooms respectively. Lately, the training industry has been impacted by the staffing crunch, just like every other business. A lot of them do have trouble finding help during the season. So, our hope is that with the improvements to the additional barns that have groom's quarters and restrooms that we can improve, that we would only utilize those barns that have been improved for groom's quarters. So total, between this year and next year, and the improvements that we made last year, we would have five barns that would have been improved with groom's quarters. And we think that could house what the need is right now for space for those people working, for the trainers. Now, a lot of times trainers don't want anybody above their barn if they don't work for them. But in this scenario, this would be the opportunity for the village to say, these are where the rooms are. If your, if your staff needs a room, this is where they're going to stay. It would probably reduce our operating costs a little bit from water, utilities, things like that, but that's all just built into the cost.
That's a good investment for the village to improve those spaces for the groom.
They've been, they've been happy this year. And we've considered building a centrally located dorm to house everybody as well. It's just a matter of what's the right price point for that, so.
Okay. Now, it helped today to see, see where these locations are, and to see Scotty's wheels turning about putting the hookups in, and how, you know, he's really, really trying to make this work.
We're in public hearing number three. Are there any other questions for Mark? And do we have any questions from the public? Nobody signed up? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this issue in public hearing number three? Seeing none, and are there any other questions for staff from council? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing number three and reenter the regular meeting?
I move to adjourn the public hearing number three and reenter the regular meeting.
Motion by Pat Pozella, the second.
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and we'll be back to the regular meeting. Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Ordinance 2310, text amendment for temporary rental of RVs in the PC zoning district as proposed, and find the amendments are consistent with the 2019 comprehensive plan.
That's a motion by Pat Pozella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, the motion carries. Public hearing number three is ended, and we are back in the regular meeting. and we are back in the regular meeting, of course. Thank you very much for that work, Mark. Move on to our next agenda item, what I believe is 18, Jeff Sanborn, and that would bring us to the audit contract.
18, yeah, right. So, I see Dana making her way up to the microphone. This is your opportunity to consider approving our 2023...
Dana, good evening.
Good evening. So this year, we have our audit contract that will be for the fiscal year 2023 audit of the financial statements, as well as the single audit for the PALVIL funding, and for this year, our alternative examination engagement related to the ARPA funds. That'll be a one-time expense this year for that. The fee, the total fee is $41,000. Given the additional engagement for the ARPA funds, which they, the audit firm estimated to be about $3,000 worth of work, I think the increase is pretty minimal. It's only about 1.6% year-over-year for the base items that are typically recurring each year.
You want some questions?
If you have some, sure.
I am amazed that the, the fees to us are real, very stable. I mean, and we had a big inflation kick, what, last year, but now it's, and you made note of this, of course, in your comments, Dana, but I, and I know that, as we've heard from the auditor when they visit with us, that there are not a lot of firms out there that are taking on business, but evidently Fortis does, like ourselves.
Yes, I was surprised as well at how minimal the fee increase was, given inflation.
Other questions for Dana on this contract? Jeff, did you have, Jeff Sanborn, did you have a point? Anybody? Okay. Is there a motion for me to be able to sign the contract?
I'm happy to do that.
Number 18?
I move to authorize that the mayor has designated enter into an audit contract with Forvis LLP in the amount of $21,000 for the financial statement audits, state single audit, and ARPA alternative compliance examination.
That's a motion by Ladya Bosch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Pizzella, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much, Dana.
Thank you.
Jeff, number 19? Gets into chapter 31 of the municipal code.
Okay, I think we, we got, we got a little bit of guidance from you all on a couple things we can clean up on this chapter 31 update to the municipal code that you reviewed two weeks ago. And I think that I've accurately made the, all of those changes, and I think I've got all of the general statute references updated to the 240, or 160D framework that Jane called attention to. I didn't intend to go through this in detail, but if you have questions...
No, I think it's come for final discussion and hopefully a vote, but are there questions for Jeff on this, or, or Jeff, were there particular changes you wanted to draw our attention back, back to that were requested? Otherwise, we'll take questions from council right at the moment here. Are there any? Think, to me, it read like we had discussed, but... Anything? Jane, Jeff? Well, thank you for your presentation. We do have a motion on this one, I think, don't we?
Yes, I, I move to...
Be 19.
Yeah, number 19. I move to approve ordinance 234, amending chapter 31 of the Pinehurst Municipal Code as proposed.
That's a motion, motion by Pat Pizzella, and the second by Jane Hogman, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We will move on into other business. Is there any other business to be brought to the council tonight? Jeff Sanborn, anything? Any council members?
Not at all.
Okay, from there? All right, we'll move into comments from attendees. Do we have any signed up? Is there anybody present who wishes to speak under public comments to the, at the regular meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to a motion to adjourn and go to our work session, is there such a motion?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
It's a motion by Pat Pizzella, second by Jane Hogman.
Yep.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We'll move directly to the work session, and we have a brief, potentially brief, agenda here. We'll call to order the work session of the Pinehurst Village Council.